Very good. Thank you, Rob. So I'll call our committee of the whole meeting to order this morning, July 11th. Is there any declaration of interest related to any item on this agenda? Not seeing any. If one should arise, you can declare it at that time. There's no, is there any business arising? Nope. Determination of items requiring separate discussion consent agenda. Does anyone wish any of those items to be removed for further discussion? Okay. Oh, Counselor Carlton, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Item five D, the school spring litter pickup program. I just have a question on that one, if I may.
Okay, we'll, we'll set that one aside just for the moment. Any others? I take a motion to receive all of those items, save and accept five D, Counselor Patterson and Counselor Deckard. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Matters for discussion and direction. Deepika is here to, she's a manager of the GB Lip. She is here, in fact, in person, which is excellent, because I thought she was going to be virtual, but she's in person. So that's even better. So welcome, Deepika. I need a motion to adopt. Counselor Hutchison, Counselor DeBreen. Deepika, you're on the floor, please.
Good morning, County Council. I'm here to present GB Lip review of year four. And by now, I hope everyone present here knows that it is a joint collaboration between Gray and Bruce Counties, which is fully funded by Immigration, Refugee and Citizenship Canada. It was funded for 2020 to 2025. And now the, the intent was to promote integration and welcoming community characteristics through community partnerships. And we work in collaboration with over sixty seven organizations to address newcomer needs and opportunities in the region. Our focus is to really development of the workforce as well as resident attraction and retention. Where retention is a key concern of our region, given the reality that the entire family needs to be welcomed when worker needs to stay at a place. And we work closely, as I mentioned, with over sixty seven organizations, including member municipalities, all seventeen across Grey Bruce. And our aim is to build capacity, strengthen community, cultivate prosperity and foster inclusion. As mentioned in the report of year four, that our partnership council meets every other, every quarter. And our subcommittee meets every month, bi-monthly. And there is an opportunity for council members to listen to guest speakers, their personal experiences and professional development for them. And each subcommittee, they have a set of identified objectives in our settlement strategy. And they work on to achieve those. So the key subcommittee activities in year four, we have three subcommittees and the first is Employment Subcommittee. I won't go in detail, but there are a few of the highlights we have mentioned in the report already. But then I'll mention that we created a video and resources for newcomer readiness assessment checklist developed by in collaboration with Western Ontario Warden Caucus and Town of Hanover. This is to promote the toolkit of newcomer assessment for municipalities to look at their own welcoming journey where they stand at now. Because there are some ten parameters where all municipalities can have a look at. We have also developed employer resource page and promotional material for employers to look for other services if they're, they have newcomers or immigrant employers at their workplace. The other initiative from Employment Subcommittee is Immigrant Work Program with the World Education Services, which include four main deliverables. The project started in twenty twenty-three February. And there are four main deliverables. One is communication campaign, which was launched this March twenty twenty-three, sorry, twenty twenty-four. There is video series where employers are talking with other employers on what is the benefit of hiring newcomers and what are the practices, best practices, practices they have adopted. I'll talk more about the video series. It will be launched this July. And then there are training modules specifically for service providers on how to engage employers in immigrant inclusion as well as employers themselves. The, the training modules are scheduled for this September. And then there is an employer navigator, which we are hoping to launch in Sep- October, where we will be having a software as well as a person helping our employers on the issues and challenges they are having in hiring immigrants. For Belong Subcommittee, we the Subcommittee contributed itself in the development of immigrant survey. First for our region, and I'll talk more in the separate report for that. We also developed through the Belong Subcommittee Cultural Calendar on the GB Lip website. Organized welcoming week event and launched podcast videos on entrepreneurship and economic development benefits of welcoming communities. For the Community Subcommittee, we have municipal welcome packages and promotional material for over nine member municipalities have already launched these welcome packages. And by the end of this December, we'll be having thirteen out of seventeen municipalities develop this package for their residents, new residents. I'll talk not all the accomplishment, but five, four, I guess, accomplishment of the year twenty twenty-three. First one is the conversations for a more inclusive and welcoming community. Our trainers have trained over thirty, forty individuals through the EDI training from over fifty organizations across Grey Bruce here on Stratford area. There is high participant satisfaction through all the survey we asked them and the trainings on concepts like unconscious bias, power and privilege are taken most interest in. And we continue to receive numerous requests for these trainings. The next highlight is the Immigrant Work Project, which is again a nationwide project to address our, our region's specific labor crisis. And through that, we are collaborating with our local employers in designing solutions to identify, recruit, hire and retain local immigrant talent. And employer consultation took place this February, followed by the launch of Communication Campaign in March that focused on immigrant inclusion messaging along with ongoing marketing and awareness efforts. We also are part of welcoming economy for refugees as well. We are part of that project as in terms of sharing all the resources and social media assets developed by Wes. The other is that video series, which is to be launched this July. We have Bruce Power as, as one of the employer from Bruce County. We have Gray County Long Term Care. And one immigrant entrepreneur themselves highlighting the challenges and the best practices they have adopted so far. So it will be employer to employer conversation video. Then the first immigrant survey to really understand diverse newcomer experiences and inform our stakeholders and partners, what are the support strategies they can adopt? And also to understand the varied experience of diverse groups and extract these research findings to inform our work. So not just our work, our member municipalities and businesses and communities at large on how to become more welcoming and inclusive. There's another project we collaborated with Toronto Metropolitan University, which was a collaborative project on creating a video for GB Lip highlighting its program impact and the importance of the local collaboration. For communication enhancement, GB Lip have contracted Intercom Inc. for marketing and communication support to enhance our online presence. And for sustainability of our funding, we have applied for additional five-year funding this January, and the outcome is expected in twenty twenty-four for September. For the year five projects, we are working on comprehensive evaluation of to assess our program effectiveness so far, the strengths and the area of improvement. And there will be a video highlighting GB Lip first five year to engage and educate our community members. Then the another big project we have is hosting the Diversity and Belongingness Conference to promote understanding, celebrate diversity and enhance community engagement. I'm sure you have the posters on your table for that. Registration link is there. These tickets are selling fast. We have over hundred, not yet, but we are hoping to have over hundred participants for the conference. We, on the, on the year five project, just on July fifteenth, I just received this morning the confirmation that we will be launching newcomer readiness assessment toolkit specifically for member municipalities to look at their own parameters where they are at in terms of welcoming characteristics for their community and what are the areas of improvement. So we have launched this project. This is the kind of pilot with four county labor market, Town of Hanover, Sogin Economic Development Corporation and GB Lip. So we will be sharing that out soon. We also seek council approval for GB Lip staff to, to travel outside of, outside of province to attend Path to Prosperity National Conference as as funded by Immigration, Refugee and Citizenship Canada. And just to conclude, as our goal is to build capacity, one of the core goal is to bring various organization and individual to move together toward the common goal of creating a welcoming community. GB Lip is not to do this on their own. And this process is the support and focus of the diverse group we have on our council. And your five plan include very specific work on understanding where partners, organizations are at their welcoming journey. And as GB Lip mature, our new practices, new partnerships and new ways of working together will emerge. And we will continue to systematize our initiatives while supporting bridging between settlement service providers and mainstream organizations.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Deepika. Did you want to take questions or? Yeah, okay. Are there any questions? Counselor McKay.
Yeah, I just wonder when it says outside the province. Where is it? And how many would be going?
Through you, Mr. Warden. The, the conference is in Vancouver and we have two staff as of now. So coordinator, me, Ibs and myself.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question to receive the report. All those in favor? That is carried. Now, Deepika, don't go too far away because the next report is yours as well. It is regarding the GB Lip Immigrant Survey two, twenty twenty-three results. Someone care to move that, please? Counselor Nielsen, Counselor DeBreen. Deepika.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So this is the highlight of our Belong Subcommittee. Over the past four years, GB Lip has conducted ongoing research and consultation and several immediate steps have been taken to address those findings from the previous research, such as initiative including a positive messaging campaign, indigenous cultural mindfulness training and a summit on welcoming public spaces for municipal staff. So in twenty twenty-three, to better understand experiences of newcomers settling in Gray and Bruce Counties, we conducted this survey. It is first of its kind to analyze diverse newcomer experiences and to inform our service providers and community on how to foster inclusivity. So the survey methodology was both quantitative qualitative from a, as an anonymous survey collaborated. This is a collaboration with Nationwide eleven Local Immigration Partnership, but we customized it as our local context. And the research, the survey is itself approved by Community Research Ethics Office. I would just go into the key findings and future considerations. Where I remember last time when I was here, there was a question around likelihood of staying of immigrants in Grey Bruce. Most respondent, forty-three percent answered their planning to stay permanently, followed by twenty-three percent who might stay permanently and twenty percent who were not sure and thirteen percent are not planning on staying. So the main questions we were around how to be welcoming, how we know that we have to be welcoming, but how we ask them this open-ended question? And the survey respondent shared the most important things community leaders should do to improve the welcoming integration and welcoming be, well-being of immigrant in Grey Bruce. And this open-ended question received several responses. We tried to put it in a theme and the four main theme emerged from this is connection, friendship and community involvement. So the most prominent theme was the importance of these three components, I would say. Many respondents specifically use the term connection when describing how community leaders could support immigrants in Grey Bruce. A building cultural competence. The next most common suggestion was related to cultural competence in broader community. This included supporting immigrant cultural celebration and recognizes, recognizing non-Christian holidays and providing cultural education and training. Supporting expanding community services and efforts was another a theme. And the other theme was addressing racism and discrimination where community leaders need to step up. So all these were can, were, the, the survey was itself from one hundred and twenty respondents and out of which thirty-seven percent are economic category immigrants here. Fifty-six percent of them lived here from one to ten year and between the age of twenty-five to forty-four, about sixty-six percent. The most representative, represented ethnic group in our region is South Asians, which is twenty-five percent, Chinese twenty-one percent, white seventeen percent and black thirteen, fourteen percent. The faith base is thirty-five percent of them are Christian faith-based and eighteen percent are of Hindu faith-based and twenty-three percent does not belong to anything. Most access, accessed services were healthcare, dental, recreational, driving license and housing. The top challenge is not to my surprise, finding healthcare, but to my surprise, making friend, which is forty-one percent. And the biggest challenge was addressing racism. The isolation was a cause of concern for myself because only seventeen percent felt that they, they do not feel isolated. About thirty percent, they feel a little bit and ten percent a great deal to seventeen percent. So all about in total eighty-three percent does not feel, so they feel isolated. And for discrimination, forty-three percent respondents said they have been discriminated on the basis of their race, skin color and their accent of language and the places where they have been discriminated are store, banks, restaurant, current employers, community engagement, recreational services and interacting with police. So the result of this study demonstrates that immigrant in Grey Bruce have had a varied variety of experience ranging from overwhelming positive to extremely challenging. Generally, the demographics of immigrant in Grey Bruce follow existing local and national trend despite a lower but increasing proportion of immigrant in the population. And immigrant in Grey Bruce expressed both satisfaction and frustration with services available and overall community. With those newer to the community, more likely to experience challenges and discrimination than long-term residents. And an avenue for our future research is now to explore the barriers that prevent immigrants from accessing those services as well as the factor that lead to overwhelming poor rating, particularly around housing, healthcare, mental health and well-being. Through the sharing of this report, GB Lip intend to support organizations who have direct impact on these findings, growing their capacity to develop policies and programs. And for us, the results show a need to develop and update different programming to support immigrant integration, addressing barriers such as discrimination and feeling of isolation. We will use the survey data to advocate for additional resources and support for our, our council member organizations. Through this survey, this can be circulated to all lower-level municipalities and Western Ontario Warden Caucus for their information. And also staff see an opportunity for Gray and Bruce Counties and others to consider joining the UNESCO Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities to promote inclusion and diversity while maintaining a focus on racism and discrimination. A future report will be brought forward to formally introduce the program for council consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Deepika. Are there any questions? Counselor Gray.
I guess to me, two of the most important considerations for, for anyone, particularly newcomers to the area and immigrants, either in this report or, or the one previous to it. Deepika, in terms of asking the question is how is the general situation for housing and access to healthcare and family doctors? That's an interest that we all share in common and we have to respond to. And I'm I'm interested in how that's changed over two, three years or, or if there's been any change at all in terms of the results that you're hearing back from individuals.
Through, through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the question, Mr. Gray. For, for the general challenges which we all face, like housing, healthcare, we are hoping that this, this was the baseline for us to understand where immigrant are facing the most challenges and they have mentioned that. And we are hoping to have the survey devised every two years, like to conduct this survey biennially so that we can track where we are progressing and how we are progressing.
Any other questions? Counselor Apples.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and through you to Deepika. What are the key points or are there any key areas or tracking when you join the UNESCO Coalition of Inclusive Communities or is it just not make the application and is, what? What is there getting out of it when you join this organization? Or what do you do to qualify to join the organization?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the question, Counselor Eckles. The UNESCO Coalition of Inclusive Municipality is the first step toward for those municipalities who are trying to start their journey to address racism, discrimination and, you know, working toward inclusion of all. I'm very sure Town of Blue Mountains have signed that UNESCO Coalition and we had this discussion with Town of Blue Mountain before as well when they started their own journey toward that. So they provide a set of pla- set of platform, like set guidelines, what you can do as per your resources look available as per your municipalities. So let's say we are just starting with signing a memorandum of understanding that these are the few things we will be doing in terms of creating more inclusive community for our, for our area. So I will present more formal and more detailed programming for that, detailed discussion on that if you need. We can come back to, I can come back to the council with all the details, but as of now, I, I know that with UNESCO Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, you sign a memorandum of understanding and you follow a step toward including your municipality efforts and strategic programming and policies toward inclusion.
Any other questions? Counselor Greg.
I did want to circle back to that, in that can, that question that Counselor Echols just spoke to because it's the one part of the report I had highlighted. To me, sometimes in, and this is a derivative, I guess, of the United Nations, some bodies of government get really good at building bureaucracy because they're not picking up the tab. And this, my concern here is that this looks bureaucratic to me, that item three, because as you just said, I think you're already working on that. And I'm not convinced of the material, but I mean, it could come back in the report, but if it's another layer of bureaucracy, I'm not sure why we would ask for a report to tell us something that, that we may already know and, and that we're working on. So that's my concerns, the one item that jumped out at me. I'm uncertain of our need to join the UNESCO Coalition if there's financial pieces attached to it.
So just to be clear, the recommendation is not to join. The recommendation is for a report to come back asking us to join. Kim, did you have something you wanted to add in there?
Thank you. I, I just note that the, the small and rural municipality aspect of this is interesting. There are a hundred and twenty-one municipalities that are, are part of this co- coalition of inclusive municipalities. They have done some work and provided some specific advice and guidance for small and rural municipalities to allow them to, you know, further the work that Deepika spoke about this morning as far as being more inclusive and more welcoming and ensuring that we're doing what we set out to do, which is to, you know, better address our, our labor needs in, in Gray County. There's another interesting aspect to this, which has to do with reconciliation and our relationship with First Nations and some of this information is very targeted toward that aspect of things. And so I do think that there's some good learning here in the materials that have already been developed in support of this. So that was my initial assessment of it, that, that there was an opportunity for us to learn from municipalities who have the same kind of scarce resources and some of the same challenges that we with.
Thanks, Kim. Counselor Mattressaw.
Thank you. Through you, the chair. I think it would be excellent to support a report on that because it, we, when the Town of Blue Mountains entered into it, it was actually from the, the point of being supported. So we're devising a plan of action and it is good for us to be able to have these kinds of resources and to have guidelines that we can follow and identify what's already happening, just like here on the upper tier, but where the gaps are and where we need to work on it. It's part of, it's part of our bold actions towards our Integrated Community Sustainability Plan. It includes, it includes what we do to build in terms of our indigenous relations as well. So it is, it is not making work. It is not in, is not having to pay for things. It is about consolidating and knowing where we still need to grow.
Thank you, Andrea. Anyone else have any questions on the report or the recommendation? Savannah, please, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Warden. And through you, County Council, I just wanted to say how I'm proud I am of the work that GB Lip is doing. And we've come a really long way in the last four years. Four years ago, we didn't have settlement services here in the region. We didn't have local immigration partnership. And there was a whole lot of individuals and a lot of different groups trying to do something off the side of their desk and a whole lot of duplication of resources and efforts. And that is really what GB Lip is meant to be because we don't get to work directly with newcomers. We are specifically meant to target and work with organizations and businesses and municipalities so that we can help build capacity. So we're really looking at our role and especially as we go into year five of what are the things that we can do to build that capacity so that we don't have everybody out there doing surveys because we know of survey fatigue and things like that. But being able to put together reports and then actually create programs that you can then just launch and do without having to invest your own resources in that. And that's why the Partnership Council, I think, works so very well because we have sixty-seven different organizations from across the region sitting at the table, talking about the same, you know, shared concerns and desire to do better and create a welcoming community. And it's when those heads go together and then it comes back to GB Lip to be able to put some of that work there and then bring it back to the group that we're start, starting to see some really good results. And I think we see that in the immigrant survey results as well, where if we would have done this four years ago, I think the results would have been very, very different. But we're starting to see a light and we're starting to see a path forward and there's certainly more work that we can do. And now we have a better idea and understanding of what that work looks like so that we can continue on. So I just wanted to add that because I really am proud of all of the work that GB Lip is doing and we're so very thankful to have them in the region.
Absolutely. Thank you, Savannah. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Mill. And thank you for the report and the survey. The the one thing that I was going to ask and you already addressed it. So I'm thrilled to know that you've already applied for another five-year grant opportunity because I would hate to see that all this good work and the momentum that is already seeing results be lost and just be shelved. So I'll keep my fingers crossed for good news soon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That is carried. Thank you, Deepika, for your work and your efforts. Thank you. All right, the next report is from Emery Shaw, Director of Community Services. She's here to She's here to give a report on nonprofit funding and of operating agreements. Someone care to move that, please? Counselor Body, Counselor Pringle, Anne Marie.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. As you're aware, we have nine nonprofit housing providers in Gray County that provide 386 units of rent geared to income market and market housing. They are very important community partners to us. They provide affordable housing, specifically the rent geared to income housing. And they're also usually our partners when we look to expanding and adding units, building. They have the capacity, the boards, and the support from the county to do that. So under our current funded model or funding model, we pay for the mortgage and the taxes, but the province determines by indices increases or decreases on other items such as administration, insurance, utilities. It's mainly funded from levy funds. There is some funding that comes from the province, but as the mortgages end, that funding will come to an end too. So I believe in 2026, 27, we are 100% funded by levy. Over the next 10 years, all the nonprofits in the province, their mortgages will end, and we will want to maintain this valuable publicly funded asset as our own. So as part of the community housing renewal strategy, the province passed Bill 184, the Protecting Tenants and Strengthening Community Housing Act of 2020, which amended the Housing Services Act and OREG 36711 by creating regulation-making authority to protect and allow us to grow the housing that we have. So as part of this regulation, it has tasked the service manager with negotiating and entering into service agreements with nonprofits that their mortgages are ending. So the new service agreements are supposed to maintain public accountability, create a flexible funding approach that is based on the unique circumstances of each housing provider, protect our existing tenancies, support sustainability, and continue to deliver housing for residents. So nonprofits, as their mortgage comes to an end, they have two choices. They can enter into a new service agreement with the service manager with Gray County and remain a housing provider, providing affordable housing. Or they can exit the current system and the regulatory system, and we would provide no funding. So we, as service managers, obviously want our nonprofits to stay as housing providers, and we had to come up with a way to do this and to convince them. So for a new service agreement, we wanted, we looked at what do we want? What do we want as a county, and how can we incentivize the nonprofit to remain a housing provider? There were a number of nonprofits, there are a number of service managers that got together throughout the province. This could have a large impact on what we do, not only just in Gray County, but as a province. Number one, we don't want to lose all of this housing, but we also want to have some sort of consistency throughout the province. I think there were 41 out of 47 service managers got together and worked on an agreement. So if you were a nonprofit provider, providing housing in two or three different service areas, then at least you're working with the same parameters and the same guidelines and same priorities. That took about nine months, 10 months for us to all come to an agreement and for something to put in place. But that agreement is attached to this, to this report. So the service agreement, we hope, will maintain a minimum of 10 years. So if a person, if a nonprofit signs on, we're expecting 10 years of providing funding or providing affordable housing. We would get to set the number of rent geared to income units that are within that housing. It would be a commitment from the housing provider to continue to take residents off of our waitlist. And there would be provisions, obviously, for us to continue to fund the RGI units. There would be a joint financial plan, which would be put together with the nonprofit and ourselves, which would provide a capital plan, which would be reviewed at a minimum of every five years, and a process to manage noncompliance or disputes, and a number of other regulations and other things that we would be looking for. The other option, though, is for the nonprofit to decide to leave the HSA framework, the Housing Services Act framework. So once their mortgage has ended, that service, they would no longer, we would no longer be obligated to provide funding, and they would no longer be obligated to provide rent geared to income housing. So in order for that to happen, there would obviously be an agreement put in place that any existing housing, any existing units would be protected and that there would be a plan for exiting the system. The exiting the system could look like someone else taking over and running that as a nonprofit. Or if there was a sale that was approved by the service manager, then that sale would, the funds would have to go back into affordable housing. So in other words, the board and the nonprofit would likely dissolve in that case. So we worked on and looked at how can we put something together that's going to provide enough support to the nonprofits and also provide incentive for them to stay. So when we looked at various funding models throughout the county or throughout other areas, other provinces, other provinces was very hard to find because most nonprofits are funded by the provincial government. We came up with some general principles and some financial principles in which we wanted to present today. We recognize that social housing is a valuable, public-funded asset, and we want to keep it that way. We want our funding agreements to allow the nonprofit to remain financially viable, affordable for the tenants, and in good repair. We want the subsidies to be flexible and transparent. We want them to be responsive to their needs. And we want any surplus funds to be going towards capital repair or development. And right now, currently, when a nonprofit has a surplus, which is not usually a large surplus, they're usually breaking even. But if there is one, we allow them to keep it, to put it towards capital repairs because all of our nonprofits have more capital repairs than they do the funds. Some of the other guidelines that we're looking at is rental income. So the current rent for, rent geared income tenants will continue. So they'll continue to be that 30% of income or following the ODSP or OW guidelines. Any rent subsidies that come to us or that we're providing, we have a number of methods that we're going to implement now to ensure the viability and to ensure that they're getting the money that they should be getting from tenants too. So we can adjust the rent, RGI, to rental in, or market rent incomes. We can help rent increases with the market units, because a lot of them have not been increased in a long time. We can look at an operating subsidy from ourselves, a capital subsidy, make sure there's information on other external grants that might be available. And if there is need for obtaining a loan or financing, helping with that if needed too. So sometimes if there is capital project that is needed, and there's, it's more money than what they have in their capital reserves, then how can we assist with that also? So operating surplus, one of the things we would like to do is continue to have the operating surplus going back to the nonprofit, up to 10% fall revenues. So this surplus could be directed to capital reserves. Reserves, it could be also put towards operating. If there's any operating needs, some of our family units, we find ourselves in more and more people or tenants in complex needs. So we're having to implement tenant services, coordinators, and people that can assist them with providing the resources that they may need in order to, you know, improve their living conditions or assist with their children. We also have put in a noncompliance and dispute resolution. And budget-wise, normally, the way it works for nonprofits is we have a, we work on a budget with each nonprofit, and then we present it to council at our annual budget. And we continue, we will continue with that process so that at budget review, all of the needs for the nonprofit will be presented at the same time. And it's going to be a 10-year process. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Are there any questions? Counselor Greg.
Two questions. The first, I guess, is some of these providers own multiple homes. Is there any requirement which we place on them to be transparent, like whether through their own websites or through their organization in terms of how that or where that surplus is generated? And then what buildings it goes back into, just to inform residents? And B, in the financial part of the, the report, there is no financial component. Just speaks to the budget. So I guess my question is, is this financially status quo for this program moving forward? Or does approval today of this recommendation lead to program expansion conditional to budget considerations? Which leads to a very difficult conversation to have then when we consider budget. If we move something forward today, and, you know, it's tough to pull back in four months. So a little bit of insight there would be great. Thanks.
So the first one, so each of our nonprofits provide an audited statement for us and an annual income return. So we would see, for instance, ones that have a couple of buildings. Each building has its own funding, so you would know which building had its surplus. And normally, the surplus goes into that building because we're asking that it goes to capital repairs. So it would be capital pairs within that. And, does that answer your question for the transparency part of it? Okay. And the next one is budget-wise. So right now, we only have three that will be coming up this year. And then, so it's going to be a gradual over the next 10 years until all of our nonprofits have moved from the way that they're paying now till their mortgage ends, and we're on to a new process. And what we would be looking at is staying within a budget that's going to work for them. So because the mortgage is falling off, that mortgage payment, that allows us to have those funds for us to work with. At the same time, all the funding from the province is falling off too. They don't equal each other. But, so that's something that we definitely will have. We have had the funding from the mortgages and from the federal government, or sorry, from, yeah, federal government, falling off over the last, I think, six or seven years. And we always have to make that up and find that within our budget. So it definitely does have an impact, but we've been doing that over the last few years. So what we would do for this year, we're fine. We're working within the budget that we have. And next year, we would come with our normal probably increase that we would have with nonprofit. We're not expecting it to be huge unless we get in there and find out that there are issues. And that's when we would be coming with an individual report then for that specific nonprofit for county to decide.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Counselor Body.
Thank you, Warden Mill. A couple of years ago, we decided that we're going to start selling off little things like individual houses on West Mount Alpha, things like that. Where is that money going to? Is it going to this program? Is that kind of what we're, like, remember at the time, we were talking about we could use it better supporting other nonprofits, and this seems to be the other end of that.
So that money is, we don't sell off nonprofits, we're selling off our own housing, so we keep the two separate. But that is going towards our Affordable Housing Fund. So that was where, when we started the Affordable Housing Fund with the 1% that County Council decided to put in, that funding was redirected to there so that we can use it to provide that seed funding for builds. So for instance, some of that funds went to our motel, 14th Street Lutheran build. Those are, that's where it's going.
Anyone else have any questions? Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you, Warden Mill. Just one question I have, following up on Counselor Greg's question. So if, if there are challenges to the service agreement between Gray County and the provider, would those agreements come back to county council as a whole? Or are those discussions just going on, as far as I understand the recommendation? It's, we're giving authorization for staff to enter into these agreements, the warden clerk can sign off. So I'm just wondering if those challenging ones, is a premise that they'll come back to council? If there's budget challenges with certain nonprofit housing?
So they would come to county council, so we would do a negotiation for the next year, right? So you're going to see it at budget time, and we're going to say, here's what we're proposing. And if there's something that's totally out of line, we would identify it and say, this nonprofit requires $50,000 for this immediate repair because of dot, 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 that sort of thing. And it could be discussed either at that time, if it wasn't an emergency repair, or it could come. We also have a little bit of a nonprofit reserve, which we could also look at using some of those funds for emergencies. Right now, most of our nonprofits are quite well-run, and they are doing well with capital. But we know as we go forward, more capital is going to be required. That's why there's that incentive for people to maybe save on the operating side if they can and put that into the capital. So they're nonprofits, they're very good at, at, you know, working as a nonprofit. So that's kind of the idea. Certainly, any surprises, any kind of issues, we would bring forward to council.
Okay, we're ready for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Anne Marie. Okay, now we'll deal with the consent item that was pulled by Counselor Carlton 5D, and that is in regards to the spring, school spring litter pickup program. So Counselor Carlton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. When I was reading the report, I think it's an excellent program to have in place, and I'm glad to see that we are doing it. My question had to do with the schools on the list that are contacted, and I noticed that Kepel-Sarowak was not listed there. So I was just questioning, are all schools included, and was that just an oversight on the list here? Or how that happens and takes place? So, thank you.
Pat, I thank you for coming in just for this particular item.
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, we, we are pretty proud of the school litter pickup too. It's been a pretty successful program for well over 20 years. And a few years ago, we always had, Hillcrest was always into it, Osprey, Holstein for a while. But we didn't seem to have a lot of schools interested for a long time. So a couple of years ago, we started, we sent letters to all the principals. But I guess it's just one of those things where in 2015, when we kind of revised the program, the clerks department at the time came up with a whole new training program. It's the same as goes with our adopted road as well. So it has, it's quite lengthy as far as training. It says, you know, stuff in there like you should stay on one side of the road, the signage it has to be up, you know, what noxious weeds to avoid, what to, you know, dangers that are in the roadside, like, you know, a needle or something. So all that training is in there. And then it is quite a program, you know, you've got to get the kids on some buses, you've got to get them out to the site. You know, the chaperones there, there is the signage, and we provide all the vests and garbage bags, and we pick them up later. But I think it's just one of those things where for some schools, it's probably just too much, maybe. And in, in, in some cases, they already have kind of a set, you know, Kepel-Sarowak has the point set of T. Like, that's their big fundraiser, I think. So some of them just don't seem as interested as some others. Hillcrest, for whatever reason, is really into it. And Alex kind of came in last year. They didn't want to do a whole ton. I think it's the first time they've done it. So we'll see next year, we work with them just on, you know, we don't, we don't want out, you know, Hillcrest to just take everything, you know. So, and then we, we upped the price this year too, because it wasn't keeping up with the inflation as directed by council. So I think the compensation is a little better now, but still, obviously, way cheaper than it would cost us to do it ourselves. So basically, yeah, we let the principals know, some I just, maybe it just doesn't fit in whatever vision of fundraising they have. But again, there could be a school in there and miss that the principal didn't know about, or the principal changed, and maybe we miss them sometimes, but we do try to get everyone in the know, and we did send a letter to the school boards about it. But it seems like it's controlled at the principal level, what the fundraising programs are.
Thanks, Pat. Is that okay? Would you care to move receiving of the report?
Yes, I will move that.
Excellent. Is there a second? Counselor DeBreen. All those in favor? That is carried. Thanks, Pat, and watch out for those Hillcrest guys. Take everything. All right, we do have a closed session matter. Let's, why don't we recess for five minutes, and then we'll come back and go into closed session. One minute warning. Okay, we'll bring the meeting back to order. And I have a motion to go into closed session, or mover to go into closed session, that the committee, the whole does now go into closed session pursuant, session two, three, nine of the municipal act as amended to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations. Counselor Hutchison, Counselor DeBreen, all those in favor? That is carried. So we'll just take a minute to. Thank you, Rob. We are now back in open session, and I can confirm that we only discussed that item, which was on the closed meeting agenda. Any other business before this meeting? Any notice of motion? I'm going to ask Counselor Boarden now if he wants to adjourn.
So I move to adjourn, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor McQueen, would you like a second? Thank you, sir. All those in favor? We are now adjourned. Thank you.